Alrighty, it's six o'clock. Diane.
Everybody ready to get started?
Yes.
Okay. Little housekeeping I'll get started with, so bear with me. Notice this meeting will be held in accordance with Executive Order N. Twenty-nine twenty issued by California Governor Gavin Newsom on March seventeen, two twenty. The Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-oh, and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act. This meeting will not be physically open to the public. All members of the public may participate and comment via the app. Zoom, meeting information and call-in information was posted on the agenda and on the city's website. The most public comment is also available by emailing the city clerk at city clerk at C I dot series dot C A dot U S. The city clerk will read your comment into the record during the public comment period. So at this time, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Condit. Councilmember Dorosik.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
And Mayor Vera.
Here. Okay, and next we will move to the invocation by Pastor Joel Boone from Big Valley Grace.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, I just want to say I appreciate you guys. I appreciate what everybody's doing and your leadership through times of crisis. And in the Bible, there's an interesting prayer from a leader in a time of crisis. It's very simple. The leader says, "We do not know what to do, but our eyes are on you." And he's saying his eyes are on God. And so I just want to pray that over you as leaders, that God would give you great insight and great wisdom, great discernment as you lead through incredible times of crisis. Father God, Lord, I pray blessing over all of those that I can see right now on this screen. God, I pray that your hand would be on them, your hand would guide them. Lord, they would have your wisdom and your discernment. God, I pray that you would give them leadership gifts for dealing with times of crisis that they're facing right now. Lord, with whatever decisions that are before them tonight on whatever the agenda is, God, I pray that they would have incredible insight, that they would really have a, an understanding and a knowledge of what would be best for the city, their city, the city that they have leadership over. And so, God, I pray that you would give them that insight and that discernment to them as a gift. And I pray this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
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 Thank you. Next, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moving on to presentations, we have one this evening. Proclamation declaring the week of May third through the ninth, twenty-twenty, is National Public Employee Recognition Week. And I do have a proclamation. I'll go ahead and read here. Public Service Recognition Week, May third, twenty-twenty, May ninth, twenty-twenty, where as Public Service Recognition Week is celebrated the first full week in May nationwide and is a time set aside to honor those who serve our nation as federal, state, county, and local government employees. Where our community is served every single day by public servants. Public employees take not only jobs but oaths. And whereas many public servants risk their lives each day in service to the people of our community, as well as provide public safety, operate and maintain our public facilities, and provide the diverse services to our residents with integrity and efficiency. And whereas over the past year alone, our city staff have provided service to nearly twelve thousand eight hundred and forty-six water customer accounts, processed fifty-two thousand one hundred and eighteen transactions at the register, processed more than five hundred and seventy procurement card transactions to support city operations, resurfaced seven and one-half linear miles of pavement, issued seven hundred and ninety-seven building permits, offered four hundred and seven classes for youth, adult, and seniors with approximately thirty-one hundred and ninety-five participants, and held the first annual trunk-or-treat in twenty-nineteen with an estimated thirty-five hundred participants. We maintained fourteen parks, which consist of more than a hundred and fifty-seven point six-eight acres and a total of forty-three point five undeveloped acres. Series Police Department responded to forty thousand and sixteen calls for service, while Series Dispatch processed seventy-five thousand five hundred and forty-five calls that included nine-eleven calls for non-emergency. Series Fire Department responded to five thousand nine hundred and eighteen calls for service and much more, all with the professionalism we know and appreciate day in and day out. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Chris Pierre, Mayor of the City of Series, hereby proclaim the week of May third to the ninth, twenty-twenty, as Public Service Recognition Week in the City of Series, and along with the City Council, express gratitude to the City of Series dedicated employees for their ongoing commitment to serve our city. Proclaim this twenty-seventh day of April, twenty-twenty.
Thank you, Mayor Vera. On behalf of all of the women and men that work for the City of Series, I want to thank you and the Council for the proclamation.
Thank you. Okay, so this time we will move to citizens' communication to the Council on matters not included on the agenda. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in City Council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Also additionally, public comments will now be accepted through Zoom. For those participating through the web, please raise your hand to request to speak. You'll find the hand icon at the bottom of your screen. If you are participating by telephone, please press star nine on your phone. The city clerk will call your name in the order the requests are received. When it's time for you to speak, the city clerk will unmute your microphone. The city clerk, please provide the name of each, will provide the name of each person who is requested to speak. So at this time, I would ask the city clerk if we have any public comments or requests.
Yes, we do. We have three hands raised. First hand raised was Gene Yakeley. Mr. Yakeley, I will unmute your mic now. Your mute, your mic is unmuted.
Mister Gene, you have your mute button on your, your telephone or your computer.
You know, you got me?
We can hear you, sir.
Okay. Yes, I want to address this, you know, to Mayor Vera and, and you, Tom, and the police chief and everybody on the City Council, the fire chief and, and Mister DiMartini, Supervisor, County Supervisor. As you know, living in the city that we live in, this virus thing's not too extreme compared to other cities and counties in California and across the United States. But I'm really worried because in the city that we live in, if you've done any shopping since this thing started and they requested, you know, across the board in America to try to wear a mask when you go into any business. In this city, if you're out enough and you do some shopping, you realize that that's not the norm. People are not doing that in numbers. And with the news recently of different counties in our area in Northern California, not way up there by Redding, but in, from Sacramento on down. From what I've recently read, Marin County, San Francisco, San Mateo, Contra Costa, Alameda, Yolo County recently, I guess they were going to start tomorrow with mandatory masks going inside any business. I know that, you know, it's hard to educate these people. People on the City Council have been trying to educate their constituents for years, and it's like beating yourself in the head with a hammer. But I want to know, and maybe Mister DiMartini or the mayor or anyone on the City Council, including the chief of police and the fire chief, what we can do about this? Why are we exempt from this? And why can't, you know, I mean, our numbers aren't that high, but we don't know what's going to happen. And I think when somebody has the opportunity to go out and shop, you know, I see people out here with little kids going in there with, with no mask on or nothing, you know, and I'm thinking, this is terrible, you know? And one death is enough, you know? We don't, you know, one death is a terrible thing for any family. So I want to know what the answer is and what's going to be done? Are we just going to forget this in our county or our city?
Supervisor DiMartini, you want to add to that first, and then I can take a shot?
Nice of you to have me go first, Mayor. Return the favor someday. Yeah, I really don't have a good answer for that. I mean, we have to be careful where we go. This virus, although it's not quite as deadly as what we first thought, but it is extremely contagious, about three times easier to get this than any other flu virus around. So as we gradually begin to open up businesses around the county there, I think we're going to have to kind of take that into consideration of people wearing masks. And they're, they're already doing the distancing already. So I was, hit some hardware stores and they are kind of observing that. I don't really have any better answer than that. As we intend to open up businesses, you know, gradually, as our Public Health Director agrees to, and there'll probably be some restrictions as far as distancing and masks along the way, but we haven't got any guidelines there yet. It's the best I can answer the question.
Sure. I can share with you, Gene, what, what I know. I'm on quite regular calls about this very subject. And as far as masks and distancing and different things, it really is business-related. I heard today, I don't know if it's true or not, but I did hear that the directive is coming down from all Costco stores.
Yes.
That they will be requiring all, all shoppers to actually wear a mask, but you know, I think it will be driven by the business more than it will be driven by the jurisdiction. Because as I've started to learn, there are equally as many people believe that we should be trying to introduce herd immunization right now as opposed to covering it up because when we turn around and go into the fall, we may be dealing with some real issues if we don't have some exposure now. So again, I don't want to debate that. But there, as far as wearing masks and, and stuff, I believe that's going to be directed by the business, not, not coming from the, the county or, or anyone else. At least that's what I'm hearing, so.
Has there been any communication with the local businesses on wanting to do this to help their customers?
Not to my knowledge. I mean, at this, at this point, you know, we have not reached out to the businesses, no, because at this point, not, not many businesses can open up.
But I mean, you got, you know, Food for Less and Costco and Walmart and Save Mart and those stores I've entered. Again, hardly anybody has a mask on, you know? A few people here and there, but if you take like, you know, a rough number of maybe fifty or sixty people, you're lucky if you stand back and watch people come in. If you've got ten people out of that group that has a mask on. I'm just thinking that, that maybe, you know, the store owners would come to you. Or Mister DiMartini, as far as, hey, we need to do something, you know, we need to do our part as a store or business owner to help alleviate this problem, even though that's not a guarantee to wear a mask, that you're not going to get it. But it sure helps out a lot. And again, the emphasis is on death, you know, and Mister DiMartini just said a while ago, this is a devastating contagious disease, you know? And if it's one person, some of these people we've seen on the news are suffering terribly. And if you're lucky enough, you survive, you know? And then today, there was a piece on ventilators. If someone survives this thing because of a ventilator, which is a good thing that they survive, they survive it, but then they have complications probably for the rest of their lives or several years then, you know? And again, you know, I'm just an individual out here, but I can't, you know, I talked to other people in other states, other, other cities in California. I've talked to a lot of people in other states, and they're a little bit more compliant even in some small towns, you know? In New York, I got a friend in upstate New York, in, in the town he lives in, you can't go anywhere shopping unless you got a mask on. And they've even got to the point, and I know New York has quite a problem, they got to a point where they are randomly stopping cars leaving the city to see if you've got any pertinent thing to be out there, you know, whether it's a job or something like that. But if you're just screwing around, you want to go to the next town to shop. They turn you around, you know, it's random stops, but it's, it's starting to work for them, you know? But here, again, you know, we live in a community where you all know that I'm looking at the people we're dealing with in this community, they don't care too much about anything. They do exactly what they want to do. They defy law enforcement. They don't care what the city tells them to do. They always want to go the other way and, you know, oppose everything. Short of the mask, these people that throw trash in our city, you know, on a humorous side, maybe we want to get them to start making masks from that trash they're throwing on our streets, you know? But we need to get a solution and we need it now. Maybe Mister DiMartini can throw something into the next meeting he has with the county that we should do something, you know, make it mandatory. These other cities are making it mandatory to wear a mask in a business. Why can't we? That's it. Alright.
Next person is Lee Brandt. Mister Brandt, I will unmute your mic.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead, Lee.
Okay, well, first of all, it, you guys are all looking good. This is, this is kind of an interesting format for everybody. I send a special smile out to Letitia, and she knows exactly what I'm talking about. Some of you know him. I talked to Marvin Kishinger last week. He's doing just fine. He lives in New York. He lives real close to New York City. He is in his late eighties and he's doing just fine. And then I just had another question, probably going to be directed towards Tom. I wonder if there's anything happening with Walmart. I mean, I know there's a lot of stuff going on in our world, you know, now, and it's probably the last thing on your mind. But, and then the Centennial Committee over there on the corner, I just, I'm just curious on what's going on.
Okay. Yeah, so Walmart specifically, Lee, we're hopeful to have on the second meeting in May, their final map and their subdivision improvement agreement. That's the last two remaining items that are needed before those can be, before that project can start construction. They do have their building permit, so those are the last items. We're hopeful to get it to tonight's meeting, but the shutdown even affects Walmart and some of the processings that they were doing for that final map and et cetera. So we're hoping to get that on the meeting of May, the second meeting in May.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Next speaker is Dave Pratt. Mister Pratt, I will unmute your mic. Your mic is unmuted. Mister Pratt. Your mic is unmuted.
Alright, let's go back to him at a later time.
Okay.
Is there anyone else?
Hands raised? No, I do have an email comment.
Okay.
Email comment is for Mister Warren. Good evening to the Council. John Warren, resident of Series. Congratulations to Mister Tom Westbrook for being selected City Manager. I'm looking forward to when I will be able to enter the City Office without an appointment to congratulate him in person. Good luck in the coming months as a city struggles through these difficult times. If you have a moment to chat, please give me a call. Thank you for always responding to my previous inquiries. And that's it.
Okay. Alright, well, at this point, if there are no other comments, we will move on. Ask one more time, Mister Pratt, and can you hear us? Okay. Alright, at this time, we will move on to appointments to boards and commissions. We have none. Conflict of interest declaration. Is there anyone on the Council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the consent counter items or discussion items? Okay, hearing none, we will move to the consent counter. All matters listed on the consent counter are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or the public for special consideration. Otherwise, recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. But this time, is there anyone on the Council that would like to have a consent counter item pulled for further discussion?
Number eight and ten.
Who was that? Was that Councilmember Condit?
Yes.
Anyone else? Okay, Vice Mayor Rhino, I see you.
Item eleven. I can't find my little hand.
Man, that's good enough.
Okay, item eleven.
Okay. Let's see if there's any. Alright, at this time, is there anyone on the audience that would like an item pulled other than eight, ten, or eleven? I don't see any hands, and I, so I will assume that we're good with those. So with that, I will bring it back to the Council for direction on the other items.
Move to approve one, two, three, eight, four, five, eight, six, seven, nine, and twelve.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit. Councilmember Dorosik.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Vera.
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you. Okay, item number eight. Resolution number twenty-twenty dash thirty-two, awarding the construction contract for the eighteen-inch force main, C C T V inspection and A R V replacement project to Pipe and Plant Solutions, Inc., authorizing a ten percent contingency and authorizing City Manager to execute the contract. Councilmember Condit.
Thank you. I was just wondering if, if the Council would think it was a good idea to put these projects, and this also applies to item number ten, on hold until we get a better grasp of the budget shortfall and that, and those figures are factored in before moving forward with these projects.
Question for you, Tom, on, and I won't address both, but I will on this one. How are these funded?
The project for this one, item number eight, is our force main that goes from our treatment plant down to Turlock, sends a lot of our effluent there each day. And so this is kind of a maintenance thing to evaluate the line and make sure we don't have any leaks, in addition to it replacing some of its, Daniel, help me out, what are they replacing? Air checks?
We're replacing air release valves, so when the pipe is, when the pumps are turned on and off, let's air in and out of the pipe. And I will mention that this is maybe one of our most critical infrastructure in the City of Series. So this line has been in the ground for about fifteen years, and we have never inspected the pipe. So this, to me, I mean, I feel that this is perhaps the most critical infrastructure we have in the city, and I would highly recommend that we award this project. We, we went out to bid. We got a really good price on this project, and it is extremely critical because this is all of our sewer discharge goes into this pipe and goes to Turlock. So this is sewer enterprise fund, so it's not general fund money, so.
And I think, yeah, I think Mayor Vera, this is also one of the items that John Warren had brought up, essentially saying the same thing about not spending the money right now.
Yeah, I guess where I'm going with that is what's happening in the world today doesn't impact the dollars that we've already collected from the ratepayers for this project. Is that not correct?
That's accurate.
Yeah, so I, so I guess it's a critical infrastructure that's not, not really impacted by what revenue we get or do not get moving forward. Is that correct, Mister Padilla?
Yeah, and I wanted to add that we've been planning this project for probably eight or nine months. We programmed this, you know, this project to be constructed. We have a date specific that the contractor is starting August thirteenth or August twentieth because of the shooting range and coordinating with T I D. So again, this is, you know, this is an extremely critical project, much more critical than overlaying a street or, you know, working on, on a park. I mean, this is a very important project that I would strongly recommend we, we move forward on. And construction won't start until mid-August, so that's four months, about four months from now. We just want the contractor to start ordering those air release valves and get ready to, you know, just plan to get ready to construct the project.
And one more piece to the puzzle, there's sand filters out there that are not being used currently. And if we can send water through the sand filters and send that water down to Turlock, we lower the B O D levels and reduce our costs on a monthly rate to Turlock for the disposal. So there is, there's benefits to this as well.
And how many, how many citizens are roughly are served, what would you say, half or three-quarters of the city served through the use of this?
It's about almost eighty percent.
Eighty percent. So it's a critical line.
Yeah, we, that's, so the treatment plant takes in about two point, two and a half million gallons per day of sewage of waste throughout the city, and we dispose one million of it, gets transferred down to Turlock. By doing this project improves the, the efficiencies in the pipeline, increases the volume. We're able to upsize the, the export pump station, run the water through the sand filters, lower the B O D levels, and send more water down there at even a lesser cost. So there's, there's benefits to it.
Okay, Councilmember Condit, do you have any other questions before?
Thank you very much for the clarification.
Okay, at this time, I want to open up to anyone in the public that would like to comment on this item. Before I do that, is there any other council member that wanted to comment before I do that? Councilmember Klein.
Yeah, this is one of the questions that I did send Daniel Padilla on this thing to get an explanation because it's done coming out of the Fund five-sixty-seven, which is not anywhere tapped into the general fund. And what it is, it's funded partially by a wastewater bond refunding. When the city refinanced their bonding, there was some expenditure monies that were available, and that's how it was explained to me with having a conversation with Mister Padilla today. Am I correct on that, Daniel?
Yes, I mean, this, this is the, the first phase of a project. I mean, this has been in our C I P budget for a couple years, maybe several years. There's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the budget to work on this force main. So, but what So, but what you mentioned, Mr. Klein, is, is correct, and maybe Letitia can clarify, but we refunded some bonds and in essence refinanced the bonds. So there was a little bit of a remaining balance that we need to use as soon as possible because we don't want to keep tracking that money, and it's designated only for wastewater purposes. So that's why we added that budget amendment to try to use that money as soon as possible. But we had plenty of money to get this project constructed without that extra bond refunding money.
Yeah, that's correct. We have, we actually have three years to spend that money, but it's, Daniel just wanted to get it, you know, spent and wouldn't have to worry about keeping track of it for three years.
Are there any other comments from the council? Okay, now we'll go back to the public. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this item? If so, please raise the little hand icon. Okay, seeing none. Diane, do we have any comments from the telephone or email?
Yes, we do, Mayor. We have an email comment from Mr. John Warren. He states, "This project has not been started, and the request is to increase the amount of budgeted funds an additional $23,263.31. Without knowing the amount our current budget shortfall might be or going forward into the next fiscal year 2020, 2021, with an unknown shortfall, it might be prudent to postpone this project or push it out until the shortfalls are known and can be planned. I read in the Bee, some of our neighboring cities have an idea of their shortfalls regarding sales tax, but Series does not have a good idea, good data at the moment. So I think we should not be spending extra money for starting new projects, even though they may have been budgeted." End of comment.
Okay. Thank you. Again, I think we've kind of addressed that, that issue that isn't new, new funding. This is something that's been programmed that we've collected from the ratepayers. So I don't know if there's any other comments of the council. If not, I'll look for direction on this item.
I do have a comment. Letitia, please, please correct me if I'm wrong, but these wastewater bond monies cannot be utilized in the general fund, correct?
Correct.
So they can only be used for wastewater projects?
Correct.
Okay, so we're not taking anything away from our general fund?
No, this money was deposited, was obtained from the bond refunding, and it was deposited into the sewer fund.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I move to approve resolution number 2020-32.
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Aye.
Councilmember Dorosik.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Vera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, item number 10, resolution number 2020-34, awarding the construction contract for the HSipl-5241 pedestrian countdown head and intersection improvements to Collins Electrical Company. Councilmember Condit?
Thank you. So Mr. Westbrook and Mr. Padilla, if you could also go into detail and explain why this project is essential moving forward until we figure out our budget shortfall, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, Daniel, can you go ahead, please?
Yes, so we, the city of Series obtained a Highway Safety Improvement Program, HCP, grant in 2017 for a total of $159,309. About $137,000 is for construction, and about $22,000 was for engineering. So this is, this is 100% state-funded, and we've been, you know, we've been granted this money three years ago. So now that we went out to bid and we got a good price from Collins Electrical Company to construct this project, which it's a safety project, we feel that it's, now is a good time to construct the project with traffic volumes being lower than normal, and this is for pedestrian safety. So I don't know if you have any other questions, but we're putting these in, on our, on some of our main material roadways, Hatch, Whitmore, Mitchell, and Crowes Landing.
Thank you so much for that information.
Are there any other questions from the council? No, but I do, I do want to say that I did ask Mr. Padilla about this one also. And if I'm correct, this is funding that came through Stan Cog and part of Measure L funds?
This is, the downtown electrical project that you had asked about, that was, I mean, this is, I'm sorry, this grant, it's Highway Safety Improvement Program grant fund, so it is, it does come through Stan Cog, but it's not Measure L funds. This is a special safety grant from the state.
But it, but it did get funneled through Stan Cog?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from the council before I open it up to the public? Okay, this time I'll open it up to anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this item. Again, please rate or push the little hand icon. Okay, seeing none. Diane, do we have any?
Yes, we have one email comment, again, from Mr. John Warren. He states, "This project also has not been started and is for a larger sum of money, $116,382. Replacement of our pedestrian countdown system probably can wait for a few months until the budget shortfalls can be determined. Again, I believe the city should not be spending extra money or starting new projects, even though they may have already been budgeted, until the shortfalls are factored in." End of comment.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, I'll look for the council for more comments or direction.
I move to approve resolution number 2020-34.
Second. Do we have a motion in a second? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Aye.
Councilmember Dorosik.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Vera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 11, resolution number 2020-36, authorizing acceptance of the U.S. Department of Justice program, Bureau of Justice Assistance 2019 Edward Byron Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, allocating and approving a 2019 to 2020 budget amendment to appropriate the funds. Vice Mayor Rhino?
Thank you. Although the staff report states that it was basically reimbursing the general fund for the training that Public Safety received, when I read the resolution, the third paragraph, it says the JAG funds will be utilized to provide one year of funding for Critical Response Team and NIBRS training that was not covered in the current budget. And Mr. Westbrook assured me that that money was being strictly used to reimburse for previous travel. But I would like that paragraph to be clear that it is not intended or that it is being used to basically pay back the city because to me, the resolution isn't that clear.
Yes, staff, staff is supportive of that. We can change the resolution accordingly to reflect that it's a reimbursement to our training budget.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any comments from the council? All right, this time, I'll ask, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this item? If so, again, push your hand button at the bottom of the screen. Okay, seeing none. Diane, do we have any comments from email or phone?
No, not on that item.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for direction on that item.
Move to adopt resolution number 2020-36 with the modification to the resolution.
Second. Also, a motion in a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Aye.
Councilmember Dorosik.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Vera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Mayor, I apologize, I just got a message from Dave Pratt. He sent an email. Let me know if you'd like me to read it.
Sure.
The email states, "The city is spending money that you don't, that you haven't received or is even getting, instead of saving money that I thought was above the budget. Now you are losing money because of the downturn. You are not going to have enough money to pay bills so much for safety." End of quote.
Okay. Again, I think, I think we've addressed those in the two items, so. At this time, we have no unfinished business, no public hearing, no new business, so we have three discussion items. The first item is item number 13, council discussion and direction on a hiring freeze for vacant/unfilled positions. Mr. Westbrook?
Thank you, Mayor Vera, and everybody that's on the call in addition to the council. What I'm going to do is I'm going to put up a copy of something I worked on, a spreadsheet, if I can find it. Okay, so what this is, at the last council meeting, the council asked the number of positions that we had that were currently vacant. So these are those positions, there's 14 of them. For everybody that's looking on the screen, you can see the annual salary, the annual benefits, the total of the, of the position, in addition to its impact and where it's funded from. So the green box is positions that are funded exclusively by the general fund or a portion thereof. The blue box is paid for through other sources, whether that's the sewer fund or the water fund. So of these positions, they are kind of in various states. The code enforcement secretary was an internal recruitment that has happened. The interviews have not taken place just yet. The water resource analysts, wastewater operator are vacant, so is the mechanic. Those, I don't believe, have started. The custodian, the park maintenance workers, both of them have not started either. The IT analyst, I know that there's a desire to maybe have an internal recruitment for that position. The human resource analyst, that is out in the public, but not the deputy finance director nor the director of community development, nor the dispatcher one. I don't believe those are out for, currently out for recruitment. The two that are the most likely to be done, I believe that Chief Wise has done his chief's interviews for two firefighter positions. And so that, those are the two that would be the most ready to be hired for the city. What you can do is if you look at this, down at the bottom of the paper, is kind of the general fund impact of those positions. If they were to be frozen, there would be savings annually in the neighborhood of around $800,000. The blue box is around $807,000, and that's again from the water and sewer funds. So with that, Mayor, I just wanted to kind of show this, this sheet, and then the council can discuss.
Okay, so.
Probably what I'll do, Mayor, is I'll take it down, but if we want to look at it again, I can, I can bring it back up, okay?
Okay. So in looking at this, a question for you, on all of the funding that's outside of the, the general fund green bar, those have already been programmed in for our ratepayers that we've been paying?
Correct.
That's correct. So what is going on today that doesn't necessarily impact it, or would it if people stop paying their bills?
That's a good question. Essentially, if we weren't getting paid, that, that would, that would be a hit to those water and sewer accounts ultimately.
Okay. And I know that, I don't mean to put you on the hot seat, Letitia, but I'll ask the question. Are we seeing the degradation in payments from our water and sewer customers?
Um, we are seeing less payments, yes. We are, we are encouraging customers to pay what they can, but we do have those customers who pay when they receive the second notice. Second notices are, you know, right now not going out, so.
Okay, and just for the record, we don't have any intention of waiving any of this. If you don't pay one month, then the following month or whenever you get to that point, you'll have to make that up.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, the other thing to consider, council and the mayor, is with our summer programming through the community center. So as you may recall, we have aquatics program that we do every summer at the Series High, in addition to day camps that are at Walter White. Currently, I've had some discussions with Series Unified School District. They said that the city can have access to the pool and to Walter White Elementary School campus again as soon as the state lifts the order. So we just don't know when that will be. The reason that I mention that is we're kind of in the prime time recruitment season to hire those lifeguards and our other day camp supervisors. And so if we're going to make a hiring freeze, the council would need to make a decision on those temporary employees as well.
Why don't we, why don't we address one, and then we can address the other, so that we're not bouncing back and forth too much? Of the, I can't speak for the rest of the council, so I'm sure we'll hear from them, but I would think any of the things that are impacted by the general fund, we, we might want to hold off on. At least, again, that's kind of my thought. Of the items that are non-general fund, that are enterprise, are there some that are essential or critical? I mean, if I'm looking down this list, I'm, you know, if we don't have a water resource analyst or a wastewater operator, is that going to impact our daily operations for wastewater?
I think I'll let Jeremy chime in here, but I think that the wastewater operator, just because the city doesn't have many of those, is probably a little more critical than the water resource analyst at this point. Jeremy, do you want to contribute?
So we've been, we've been without the water resource analyst for about two, about two months now. We haven't started the recruitment, we haven't started in the process, and internally, we picked up the reporting and the slack on it. With that position, there's just so many unknowns right now with the state. The new urban water management plan guidelines are coming out, we don't know. There's a lot of unknowns. The wastewater operator is a critical position. I mean, we're short-staffed as it is, and we need that body. The water resource analyst, we could, you know, use that, we could leave it, we could leave it vacant for a while. That's not an issue.
All right, so if we were, of the ones that, either you're in charge of Jeremy or Tom, if we're looking at that other column, can we highlight the ones that you would say are critical that if we don't have them now? Or even if we authorize them now, you may not have them for three to six months anyway. But are there any that you would say, man, we really need to have those right now?
I would say the wastewater operator would probably be.
Tom, can you put that back up?
Oh, yeah, hold on a second. Sorry about that. If I can find the right one, Jeremy, there we go. Sure. So probably the wastewater operator for sure. Jeremy, your, your shops, what do you?
We need, we need a mechanic in the shop. We have too many rules from the state with OSHA requirements, and we have an AC certification that we're lacking right now, so we need, we need that position. Custodian, we're okay. I mean, parks, you know, I can't believe I'm saying this, but we, we went so many years shorthanded, so, you know, another six months without filling these will manage. The others, I think that the fire chief and police chief need to chime in on.
Okay. Before we, before we go get, get to them, is there anyone on the council that, I mean, is there anybody that wants a general fund position to be considered? Or are we in agreement that maybe we should hold on those for now?
Mayor, can I speak?
Yes.
You know, firefighters, did we do the background checks on the firefighters already?
Yeah, I believe so, Councilman Dorosik. I think Chief Wise has had the interviews, so I think they're probably ready to go. Kevin, do you want to chime in, please?
Yeah, we just completed the final interview.
Yeah, we just completed the final interviews. We were waiting for one more candidate that's in the National Guard. He's gonna be available here in a couple of weeks, but we haven't done the background checks yet on them.
You have not done the background checks on them?
Are you able to hear me?
Yeah, you're kind of breaking up. Is, is breaking up everybody else?
No.
The, uh, the, the reason why we have two vacancies.
Yeah, I've got a bad signal out here.
Why do we have the two vacancies?
I believe one was a retirement, Councilman DeRocci. So Chief Brett's asking why the two vacancies.
Yeah, we had one firefighter quit to become a nurse, and we had one retire.
Is it gonna do anything to overtime, if for some reason we don't hire these two positions?
Yeah, we're gonna have to fill these positions with overtime until we can get them filled.
And what do you think that might cost us for the year?
Well, I think Letitia could probably answer this question, but it is cheaper to pay overtime, but in the long term, it's much healthier to have those positions filled.
I would have to do a little bit of analysis, but yeah, to, to just pay overtime, it just depends on how long it's gonna be.
Okay, so Councilmember DeRocci, are you, you're indicating you'd like those positions to be considered?
Well, I'm, I'm just sitting there trying to look at the big picture of things. I mean, it would be cost effective. I didn't know if we were to do the background check, if we were to do the background check, that, that costs thousands of dollars. I mean, how much money did we have invested in these guys? So, that was all.
Okay. Anyone else in the council that wants to discuss the general fund positions? I, I don't know where we are with that yet, but I just want to flush out which positions. So I'm, I'm hearing that you, you had some concern on the firefighter positions. Any of the others in the general fund that the council wants to consider?
Mayor Viera?
Yes.
The reason that I even asked for this to be a discussion item was all the media was talking about the hit we're gonna take in our budget because of this COVID-19. It wasn't necessarily that it will be for a whole year. We just, I don't think we can make these decisions until we know where we are with the next budget. That doesn't mean that they may be frozen for a year, maybe they are frozen for a year, but it, it was just really, I wanted to wait and see what our budget looked like. And then in the blue column that I believe Mr. Westbrook commented that those were other funds, you know, I, I can understand if you want to keep someone that has been funded from water and sewer, but when you're looking at, I don't know, maybe one of these other funds would be the Internal Service Fund, Tom? Are some of these positions Internal Service Funds, which, okay, that would be like the IT analyst.
Yep.
Resource analyst, the, I don't know, there might be other ones, but even though it says Internal Service Fund, that's still, in the case of the police department, even though it says it's an Internal Service Fund, it really is a hit on our general fund, because they're entirely funded through the general fund, correct? So when someone hears Internal Service Fund, it isn't necessarily like water and sewer, that's an enterprise fund. It really, depending on which department it is, it could be hitting the general fund, correct?
That's correct, because the Internal Service Funds pay for a number of things, water, sewer, and everything. So that is correct. There would be some break, I guess, in the general fund if a, a position like the IT analyst was not filled.
Okay, so, so that, the, my big question was, or my big concern was, we just, I believe, need to wait until we see the budget and how bad of a hit we really are gonna take before we hire any of these positions. The only ones that maybe I could see hiring, even though they would hit the general fund, would be the firefighters and the dispatcher. But again, if we wait until we see our budget, that's also soon enough that we could turn around and hire them after that point. So I, I still would be more comfortable if we held off until we actually see what's going on with the budget.
So your, your decision is you don't want to hire any of these positions right now?
Well, I think, no, I think that either Mr. Thomas or Mr. Westbrook said that we need the wastewater operator, correct? And we needed the fleet mechanic because we didn't have.
Correct.
But then again, everybody could, if you ask, usually every department head, they're gonna say, I need this position, I need this position. So I, I'm wondering if we do or not. I mean, the wastewater operator doesn't look like anything's coming out of the general fund, and neither is the fleet mechanic, unless there's.
Fleet's an internal. Fleet is an internal service fund.
I didn't hear what someone said.
He, he said it's an internal service fund.
Oh, so it could be, it could be hitting some of the general fund then.
Right, there's a small portion out of the general fund, two police and fire that gets hit.
Okay, well then, I think I would be more comfortable if we just held off till we saw the budget.
I would agree with the vice mayor.
Okay. Is it possible to hear from Collins in regards to dispatch? I know that we did a contract with Newman. I mean, do, and obviously with all the situation out there in regards to people being released, I mean, do we have enough dispatchers?
Dispatch is really critical right now. If I had to have one from general fund right now, would absolutely be a dispatcher. You're looking at anywhere from six to nine months to get them fully trained, and the longer we wait, the longer it's gonna be before we can get another fully trained dispatcher up and running.
So we're down one right now?
Yes.
And that's a ninety-one thousand dollar hit, obviously, y'all can see that, but.
Do you also have a savings because you're filling a position that someone has left? Is there a savings from that, or there is no savings?
We just had one leave. If there are any savings, it's gonna be minimal, but I would defer to Letitia for that, to do the analysis.
So the one that just left is the one that you're trying to fill?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any?
So it sounds like it's not an increase, it's a, it's a status quo from what we've already approved, correct?
Correct.
Well, that's what a lot of these are, though. They're just filling positions that have been left vacant, somebody left or whatever. So I don't think we can judge it on that. I think if we were to say one general fund position, it would be dispatch. I, I don't know. Again, I think if we're gonna be looking at our budget in May, I still would rather just hold off, I mean, one month or two months, I think it's gonna be worth it, because we don't know how bad things are gonna be.
Okay, is there any other council member comments before I open it up to the public?
Mayor, I got another question.
Sure.
If we don't hire any of these people at this present time, correct?
Well, I think that's what's, what's being discussed. It's, it's not that these positions are being eliminated, it's just, what's the timing of it?
Right, but, but we'd be saving one point six million dollars approximately with those.
Well, not really. I mean, because if, that would only assume that we would save it if we never ever hired these people. But if we end up hiring them two months from now, we will have saved something, but it won't be the, the one point six.
Yeah, but, but then if we don't, just for example, the general fund won't take a hit of eight million, eight hundred thousand dollars, because that's gonna go not back into the general fund budget, because, because we don't need that to spend, correct?
I, I, I believe that's correct, yes.
I hope I wasn't confusing you. I mean, I, I, I'm looking at a couple of these things, and, I mean, you know, we're in a situation where we have obviously more crime, more craziness going on in the world, obviously, the COVID's a thing. And what if we did hire a few of these positions, and all of a sudden, we decided, you know what? At some point in time, whether it be two months from today, because we'd, we'd be saving for the dispatch, what it would cost us thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars up until July, because that's what the cost factor would have been. You know, that maybe in a, in a year or whatever, then maybe we go back and we have to, have to change things, you know what I'm saying? I'm not saying layoffs, but I'm just saying, some things may have to be looked at at a certain time.
But why would you do that until you know what you actually have in the bank? See, that's what I'm all about. I want to see the money we have before we start spending money. I don't want to, even like capital improvement projects, if we need to halt some of those until we know what our budget is like, then we need to do that too. And if they're funded by Major L, well, that might be a safe way to go, but we have to be sure we actually have the money from Major L. We need to make sure that we have money in our bank account before we're spending it.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not agree a hundred percent. I'm just thinking, are some of these things something that we have to have regardless?
That's it. I, I don't think we have to.
I don't think that's your question. Your, your, your question is timing, right, 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 Vice Mayor Rhino? It's not whether we need these positions or, it's just the timing of it. So the, the, this item really is, do we want to continue to move forward with these at this time, or do we want to wait until, as you had indicated, we get a better picture of the budget before we make the determination on the timing? At least, that's what I think.
That's what I would like, Mayor.
Okay, any other comments about that? And before, again, I know there's probably some people in the public that would like to comment on this item.
Well, I think we need to also have a discussion, because, you know, one of the things when we hired Mr. Westbrook as the city manager was the recruitment of the Director of Community Development. But, you know, going back to what Councilmember DeRocci said, you know, and what was spoken, you know, I think we need to look at the dispatcher. We, we signed an agreement with the city of Newman to take care of their dispatching services and stuff like that, and to maintain the level of service we've had. And, you know, it's gonna take a while for recruitment. So, you know, if there's any one of them that we really need to look at, I think would be the dispatcher.
Okay. Any other comments? Again, I'll bring it back to the council after we hear from the public, and then we can have some more discussion. Maybe I'll have you go ahead and remove that, Tom, and we'll get back to the public. Okay, so at this time, I want to open it up for the audience to see if there's anyone that would like to comment on this item. Okay, I don't see anyone raising their hand. So Diane, do we have any emails or messages, phone messages?
Mayor, we have one from Mr. John Warren. He states, in regards to these vacant positions, I'm not sure what the council's position is regarding this matter, because the public speaks after the council discussion. I would suggest the city does need to operate with all of its positions filled. This allows, this allows government to operate smoothly and efficiently. But going forward, in the next few months, salary savings from these vacant positions will be a big factor in the budget. I know salary savings, savings from vacant positions are always factored into the budgets, or at least I think they would be. So please consider placing a hold on filling these positions and all non-essential spending of the budget funds. End of message, and I just received an email from Mr. Dave Pratt. Let me see. That is not a message. He said he had his hand raised, and I do not see his hand raised. And I'm not seeing him in the list of attendees. So that would be all the comments for now, Mayor.
Okay. All right, at this time, I'll bring it back to the council for further discussion on this item. One question for you, Tom, or, or Vice Mayor Rhino. I know we're going to have some, the budget discussions, but let's say, are, are we really gonna have a good feel for what our revenue is going to look like even a month from now?
I think that that's information that Letitia is getting together currently, so I would let her speak to that.
Well, there's, there's analysts out there who are saying once, once the state, you know, the, the stay-at-home order is lifted, then we'll have a better idea. There, we do have Avenue, who's working on our sales tax figures. Generally, across the state, they're saying sales tax is gonna be down ten and a half percent. That's the number I'm hearing right now. The only other property taxes are, should stay, should be relatively the same. The other big hit is gonna be TOT. Right now, they, they don't have, they don't have a, a good idea of what our revenues are gonna be, but we've got consultants working on it.
Okay, thank you. Tom, let's, let's throw some hypotheticals out there. If Governor Newsom keeps us in his executive order and shelter in place for another two months, are we gonna have any clue as to what our revenue is gonna look like before September?
No, because that's when those numbers will come in, around that point in time of the year.
I only bring it up because I heard today, one of the scenarios is that he's not going to loosen up his executive order for several weeks from now. We could be looking at that, but I, I don't know how that impacts what we do on these, these positions now, but I think the question at hand is, are we moving forward with them now, or are we waiting until we have a clear budget picture whenever that time may be?
I think we wait until we have a clear budget picture. I would hate to hire, fill these positions, and then find out, you know, in six months or four months, whatever, that we really did take a big hit. And then what are you gonna do with these positions that you filled? I, I don't want to be put in that position, and I'm sure, Mayor, you were on the city when they had that, the big layoff in two thousand nine, and I don't want to have to go there. I mean, it was really a horrible experience for a lot of people.
Okay, is this an item, Tom, that we, and I'm sorry, Tom, oh, I had, gonna have to make sure I know. Is this an item where it's just a discussion, or does council member have to make a motion on what they would like here?
On mute, Tom.
This is just a basic direction with the out of motion at this point, Mayor.
Okay, so I'm hearing that Vice Mayor Rhino would like to table this until we have more information on the budget numbers. At this point, I'll, I'll ask the rest of the council. Let's start Councilmember Klein. How do you feel?
Well, you know, I, I could feel the same way as Vice Mayor Rhino, but I think that we need to look at at least the dispatcher one. You know, we'll still have the savings, potential savings of over seven hundred thousand dollars in the budget. But dispatcher one, with the stress and the amount of time it takes to hire them, I think we, the, the one from the general fund we need to look at is dispatcher one to fill that position.
Okay, Councilmember Condit?
I would agree with the vice mayor.
Okay, Councilmember DeRocci?
I'd agree with Councilmember Klein, and I know I brought it up earlier in regards, and just listening to how long it's gonna take. I mean, it may be four or five months before that person's even hired, so we're not spending any money at that present time. But it just seems like we're in contract with Newman, and the, the world's crazy, and what a crazy job that is, and it's something that we have to have. I have a question, though, for you, Mayor. You might be able to answer this. Did we lay off any dispatchers back in two thousand and seven?
I don't believe so, no.
Because it was needed.
Yeah. I, I think there's about three critical positions on here, but I, I can probably live with the one. I, I, I think we definitely do need the dispatcher, and if there's nobody to call in a time of distress, I think we have a real problem. So I, I, I would say that I can agree with my council members, Condit and Rhino, on holding on all the others, but then agree with Councilmember Klein and DeRocci that we need to continue to move forward with the dispatcher. So I don't know if that gives you the direction that you need, Mr. Westbrook?
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's pretty clear. We'll move forward with the dispatcher one position, and then at this point in time, none of the others.
Yeah, and as soon as we get some type of clarity on budgets and everything, I want all these positions to be brought back and discussed because, again, we're not getting rid of, we're not chopping these positions. We're just putting them on hold until we're willing where we stand with everything.
I had another question, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask or not. But, Mr. Westbrook, given the fact that we don't know what the hit will be, have you made any plans as far as cutting back essential, any kind of spending in the current budget? Are you going to wait until?
So we, yeah, we've kind of given that direction to the department heads and the staff that does purchasing. So we suggest that all discretionary spending in our current budget needs to be approved by the Finance Director or myself.
Okay, so that means that you're putting a kind of a kibosh on it then, unless it's something that's?
Critical, unless it's something that's critical.
And then what about Councilmember Condit was earlier talking about the capital improvement projects? What about those?
We haven't looked, yeah, we haven't looked at any of the capital improvement projects yet.
Because those, even though they're called capital improvement, where does the money come from those? It doesn't all come from, you know, Major L or Stan Cog or you'll be looking at that as well?
We can look at that. It depends on the funding source. If it's a water line, it's from the water. If it's a sewer line from the sewer. So it just depends on the source of the type of the project would be the source of the money used to build it.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Klein?
Well, and to feed off of Vice Mayor Rhino, when it comes to the funding source, how many of those projects do we have to pay for and then wait for reimbursement? And if it takes us to get our money back?
Daniel, do you have a good sense of that?
Well, I'm looking at my board here, and most of our projects are not funded from the general fund. I'm looking at, you know, a couple of park projects that we have going on, where those are neighborhood park fees, which we have already in our bank accounts. We have, you know, a couple wastewater projects where the funds are in our accounts. And then the federally funded projects, we usually get reimbursed fairly quickly. A couple of months after our projects are constructed. Or if we want to do a partial payment, you know, we can also get partial reimbursement as we're going. So, again, most of our, most of our capital improvement projects are, it's rare that we get one that's funded by a general fund.
I would say at this point, each one is individual. Let's just table that until it comes up, and then we can make a determination of whether we want to move forward with it based on the funding sources. I don't want to put a blanket statement on something because if there's something that's a critical need that has to get done, or for instance, we lose sewer capacity or something, or conveyance, then we would obviously want to take that project on. All right, so I think you have the direction you need on this item, Tom. So unless there's any other comments, I'd like to move to item 14. Council discussion and direction regarding recognition for city employees working through the COVID-19 pandemic?
Yes, yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, Vice Mayor Rhino brought this up at the last meeting, just wanting to have a simple discussion about this, whether it's a one-time bonus or if there was a 5% or something like that. Stanislaus County, I believe Supervisor Di Martini could weigh in on this one. But Stanislaus County had realized some savings in their, I think, some of their health expense that they had budgeted for this year. So they were going to use those savings to kind of reward county employees. What I did is I kind of took some numbers together based upon a $500 amount, a $1,000 amount, or a 5% increase. If you look at the $500 amount, that would be roughly around $120,000. That would be for the salaries and the taxes, so if that was just done as a one-time deal. The $1,000 bonus, obviously, that's double the amount, 241,000. If you looked at simply doing a 5% increase every pay period, which is every other, every two weeks, that would be about 30, just under $31,000. So those are kind of the things that we pitched in terms of what type of financial impact this would have. Most of this would hit the general fund. There would be, if there were something, if we were selected one of these, then some of them would be paid out of water or sewer. But largely, because most of the budget is general fund related, there would be an impact to the general fund to move forward with one of these alternatives. And with that, I'll turn it back to the council.
Okay, Vice Mayor Rhino?
Tom did reach out to me, and we had a discussion instead of a monetary amount that we could give recognition in the form of vacation hours that would not impact the city financially. Is that correct, Mr. Westbrook, as long as they didn't cash it out?
Yep, you know, the thought, the concept there, council, was maybe doing something where there could just be a one-time insertion of vacation hours to our employees' leave banks. When they take the time off, it could be paid this year, it could be paid next year. It just depends on when they utilize the time. Didn't really.
When you say paid, though, it's not paid as in taking the money from the general fund. It's coming from, right?
Correct.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
So, you know, we didn't necessarily discuss the number of hours to be considered. But I did a little kind of back-of-the-napkin sketch based upon, if you did 5% of kind of a 10-week period, that would turn in, I believe it was 20 hours, I think is what it would be. So that was just kind of a starting point, which for most people, that would be about three days of, three days off.
And I think if, I like the idea. Originally, I thought there are some employees who could probably use the money more than the vacation time. Nobody can take vacation now, you can't go anywhere anyway. But the reality is, we have to look at what's coming down the pike as far as what's going to happen to our general fund anyway, when we start getting these hits. But if the council were interested in recognizing any employees for working during this pandemic, I would ask that there be some stipulations on it that whatever the hours, the vacation hours are, that it be shown as a separate line item in the employee's pay stub and that when they do take their vacation, it has to come out of that line first and that any employees could not cash it out because that's kind of defeating the whole purpose. And that would include city manager and department heads that have the ability to cash out a certain number of vacation hours a year. This would not be able to be cashed out by anybody. And that my intent, when I brought it up, was really to recognize the employees who were going to work every day. It wasn't, it wasn't to recognize the employees who were able to work at home, but it was the employees who were coming to work and potentially taking something home to their families. That was, that was my intent.
Can I have some clarification, Tom? I'm struggling with how we say that providing vacation time isn't a cost. Is that time going to be unpaid when they take a vacation? Because if it's not, and we're paying them, and then we have to have someone do their job, and we're paying them, there is a cost to the general fund and everything else, is there not? Because we would, in theory, be paying two people when we would have normally just be paying one.
There would be a cost associated when they actually take the vacation time, yes. But if.
It's not for free.
Correct, it's not for free. But if it's in a bank, then as Vice Mayor Rhino suggested, then it could be used over a period of time. So it wouldn't necessarily have to be used immediately. They could use it at their leisure.
Okay.
Well, and another stipulation would be that you couldn't take this vacation time, that it would incur overtime for somebody to cover your work.
Well, first of all, I mean, I'll comment on this. I mean, I think we have great employees. I appreciate all of their hard work and the dedication that they provide to the city. But for me personally, I, it'd be difficult for me to support this for a number of reasons. One, I know some of our employees don't have public interaction. So the risk pay, if that's what we want to call it, you know, it's hard for me to justify. If I look at 122,000 or $120,000, that's one public safety position, whether it be police or fire for a year. You know, even if we're giving it as vacation time, that's a cost to the taxpayers. And given that people are not working, they're hurting, we're asking them as a taxpayer to help fund a bonus for someone that is fortunate enough to work right now. I just, for me, I can't, I appreciate all that they do. But how do I talk to the person who's about ready to lose everything that they have because they can't work? And say, oh, by the way, I'm going to go ahead and give you a bonus for doing that? For me, that, I can't support that. But I'd be interested in any other councilmember comments because I'm only one.
I got, Councilmember Drossit? I wrote it down as well. I said, is it going to cost against the overtime? And again, is there a real $2 savings? And I didn't think there was a $2 savings, but I think this kind of goes with the times, you know. And again, I love the idea, Vice Mayor. I mean, if we could do it, I'd love to do it. I mean, that was, that was a great idea. This goes back to when we had talked about barbecue, and we did something for the workers within the city, and maybe more than just once, that we get people together and feed them and do something different than what we've done because we've always talked about it, but we haven't done it yet. That's what I would be for.
Okay, any other councilmember comments before I open it up to the public?
I just have a few questions, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Mr. Westbrook, I guess, how many essential employees does the city have? And what's the definition of a central employee? If you can just give the council and the public kind of a brief information on that.
Yeah, essential employees, basically anybody that needs to be here so that we can, we can run the city, essentially. And so the persons that are non-essential or folks that could work from home, there are a handful of employees that have been sent home. There were some layoffs from temporary salaries as well, or temporary positions. So we have done that, but most of the employees that are here are essential.
Okay, and this would not apply to hourly employees? Or would hourly employees fall under in central? Or can you elaborate on that?
It would pretty much be any and all unless there was direction given by the council. So I think the Vice Mayor and her remarks were kind of those employees that still had access to the public and interactions with the public.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the Vice Mayor bringing this up. I do believe it was well-intentioned. I do believe her heart is in the right place, and I do value our city employees and everything they do. But I would echo the Mayor's comments. I would agree with him and his statements. It would, we need to just be cautious of government serving itself, and we need to consider the public in general. I'm not saying that any of the council members are not considering that whatsoever. I do think the Mayor is absolutely correct that we need to think about those who are out there who are losing everything or who are in jeopardy of losing everything. And if we are going to spend something, I would like to see something put forward, something of a model of the county and the City of Modesto that they did for the Small Business Association program. So if we are going to spend, I would like to see maybe that being put towards small business here in Series.
Okay, Councilmember Klein, I don't know if you want to comment?
I can, you know, I thought that Vice Mayor had a great idea. And when she first brought it out here, but I started looking at it. And I look at some of these businesses that are paying, you know, extra pay to their employees, and they're taking that right out of their bottom line. That's where their money's coming from, is their bottom-line profit, profitability. They're taking a hit with it, and, you know, that's not tax dollars. So I do agree with you, Mayor Viera, that, you know, maybe there's something else we need to look at. I mean, as we're looking at what our shortfall is going to be and how we're going to budget, you know, for next year, we're just, you know, got through discussing about $800,000 worth of employees' salaries that, you know, we gave Mr. Westbrook some guidance on. And I think we just need to stand, wait, wait to see where we stand.
Okay, at this time, I'll open it up for anyone in the audience that might like to comment on this. Again, please push the raise your hand button if you would care to speak. Okay, I'm seeing none. So Diane, do we have any emails or phone messages?
Yes, we do, Mayor. We have one email from John Warren. He states, we have very dedicated, we have very dedicated city employees, but they are being paid their salaries for the work they perform on a daily basis per their contract. At the end of the day, they will receive their pay and benefits. There are many series businesses who have had to close their doors and are not receiving a paycheck. The council should consider spending their pandemic assistance dollars in that direction with forgivable loans that businesses who cannot receive assistance from other government sources. Thank you for considering their needs as well as our dedicated employees, some who receive over $10,000 per month without exposure to the general public. End of comment.
And that's the only one you have?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, so just to kind of summarize, I think the direction was that at this time, the majority of the council does not want to do anything on this item. But if there is additional funding that comes available, I think we would want to model something after what Councilmember Condit had mentioned that the county slash city Modesto are doing with funding to help small businesses out. I don't know that we have any funding, but if you could let us know about that, Tom, that would be great.
Yeah, there's budgets tied all around, so there's not a lot of resources out there that we could offer our business community.
Okay, if you hear of anything, please, please let us know.
Yeah, and opportunities Stanislaus and Councilmember Condit have been sending stuff along that we've been forwarding to the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay. All right, with that, we will move on to item number 15, the COVID-19 discussion, Mr. Westbrook?
Yeah, thank you. For all those folks that are on the call, this was a, going to be a closed-session item. We're going to talk about it here, so therefore it will not be talked about in closed session at all. The other items would. So as of today, Series has 33 cases. As you may have read or seen, the City of Turlock has kind of an outbreak at one of their skilled nursing facilities. Currently, since last Monday, it's been in operation for about a week. There's drive-through testing at the SLI library. All you have to do is go on to the Health Department's website and do a little bit of an online survey, and then they'll tell you if you need to come up and get tested. So, yeah, so if you're going to go to that testing facility, you have to register before you go. They have capacity to deal with about 200 tests a day. Dr. B, the Public Health Officer, says really the testing supplies are the limiting factor for her. But they have been averaging, I think, Friday, I hadn't seen the numbers for today, but I think last Friday, they did 94 tests at the SLI library. So that's kind of the current state of the COVID-19.
At this time, does anyone have any questions from the council?
I just have a quick question, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Mr. Westbrook, can you go into the qualifications? I mean, I know I kind of brought this up last time about our first responders, but what qualifies someone to get a test? Because I have had a few people reach out to me who. Because I have had a few people reach out to me who said they were actually turned away and denied a test because they didn't fit the qualifications.
I think that you have to be symptomatic. So I think that Council, Councilman Condit, if, if anybody that you know is interested, if they go to the county's website and they take that online survey, that's going to tell them if they need to be tested or not.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Is there one, anyone in the audience that have any questions or like to comment on this item? I know we addressed it a little bit in the public comment period, but... Okay, I'm seeing none. We will go ahead and move on from this item.
I did, Mayor Viera, I do apologize. I forgot to ask one thing when we were going through item number 13 about the position. So loud and clear, we're gonna keep moving on track with the dispatcher. I had mentioned briefly about our day camps and our aquatics program. Are we putting those on hold or are we gonna continue with recruitments for those positions? As everyone knows, aquatics and community benefit, very popular year after year. Things would have to change a bit. We just don't know when the order from the governor is going to be lifted. Typically, our, our swim lessons start in June and go into July. So we're at the point at the staff level that we need to get those recruitments underway if we're going to continue with the programs this year.
A couple of questions I would have for, for you, Tom, is, is, does the governor's order actually govern swim lessons? And I, I might be on the different end of the spectrum here than, than some others, but my feeling is if we give some guidance and some direction as far as social distancing and we limit it to one parent or something, I believe we should move forward with it and I'll tell you why. You know, I would hate to have a child death for a kid that drowned in a swimming pool because they didn't know how to swim. And as we know, with, with canals and other things around here, that can easily happen. So although everyone might say, well, it's not essential, it's, you know, we're exposing ourselves, I might say, if I have the opportunity to save one child's life by teaching them how to swim, I might be willing to take that risk. So that's how I feel about that. So my feeling would be that we continue to move forward with proper guidance as to the direction. But again, that's my opinion and, or others.
I haven't really looked at the stay-at-home order to see if aquatics or swim lessons would be something that can happen. All that I do know is when I talked to one of the assistant superintendents, they were concerned about people being on school campus. So if, if that portion of the order is lifted, then Series Unified is committed that we could use their pool for our aquatics program.
And how much money do we spend in training those lifeguards? Because they have to go through and get certified and we have to spend money. And do we do backgrounds on them too because they're working around kids? So we're gonna spend all this money not even knowing if we're gonna be open or not to be...
So, you know, Councilperson Rhino, we spend about around $58,000 a year. That's what we had budgeted for this year and for the next fiscal year. And our revenues are right around $38,000.
And Tom, can I chime in real quick? On that, the lifeguards pay for their own training. We just paid for one staff to teach that class, but we have made a substitute this year just with timing and the pool not being available. These rec leaders versus lifeguards, just because we don't have the training time. So we do have them place, put some staff in there to make lessons happen that don't need additional, the training the lifeguards need for this.
That's cheaper.
Well, Mr. Westbrook, can you find out how that's affected by the governor's stay-at-home order?
Yep.
Thank you.
We'll look at that. And I know that I've been involved in the EOC. That's a great question for them because that's gonna be the county CEO and some of that management staff. So we'll go ahead and ask that question to see if aquatics are even on the radar screen yet for the county and any of the cities.
Okay, so does that give you direction?
Yes, sir.
The council want to do anything different? I'd see that Chief Weiss has his hand up.
Sorry, I was trying to get through to you guys earlier. I have a bad connection at my house. Can you hear me?
Yes.
With, with the firefighter recruitment, if I continue on my current path, it's gonna take me at least two months. Once I decide the two candidates, by the time I do the medical and the background, it's gonna take about two months. I believe we can give them a conditional job offer. However, when the background's been completed, I believe if there's a hiring freeze in place, obviously we don't have to hire them. So if we could, I'd like permission to keep moving forward with the recruitment and at that time, come back to the council, make sure it's okay to hire them at that point. We're trying to coincide this recruitment with the city of Modesto and their recruitment and we were going to do a joint academy out at our training center and that was gonna save us a lot of money in overtime and training.
Okay. How, how does Councilmember Klein and Drossit feel about that?
I'll be okay with that.
I'm okay.
I'm, I'm okay as well, just as long as before the, the final hiring, it's brought back to us.
All right, thank you.
Okay. With that, we will move to council member referrals. Is there anyone on the council that would like to have an item placed on a future agenda? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to council member reports. I have nothing to report, so about Councilmember Klein? I have nothing to report. Okay. Vice Mayor Rhino?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember Drossit?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilmember Condit?
I have nothing to report this evening.
Okay, so we'll start with staff. Laetitia?
Nothing, Mayor.
Tom Hallahan?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Westbrook?
Yes, so for the council members, you should have got a second link. That will be, you'll need to be logging out of this meeting and logging back into that link. That's gonna be for the closed session with our attorneys. So when we're concluding this meeting, make sure you go ahead and log out and log back in. For Tom Hallahan and I, we will be reporting out. Once the closed session is done, we will log back onto this meeting and Tom can report out at that point in time. So just make sure, council folks, that you log out of this meeting and log into the second link for the closed session. That's it.
Daniel?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Collins?
Nothing, Mayor. Just to say thank you for letting us move forward with the dispatcher. It's critical.
Okay. Mr. Weiss?
Yeah, just real quick, I just want to acknowledge our members at the Fire Department have been working at the Emergency Operations Center. And we've been there this week helping out with the center. Also, we've been working with myself and Laetitia on our fee reimbursement for the city. We're also starting our weed abatement real aggressive this week. Also, for the drive-through testing, we have the link on the city's website. If you go into the Fire page, we have the link on there. And it is our hope that the apparatus will be here in about two to three weeks.
Okay, thank you. Matt?
Nothing at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Jeremy?
Nothing, Mayor.
Aaron?
Nothing here, Mayor.
Okay. Supervisor DiMartini?
I just have a quick report on the status of the coronavirus. We had an update at the 616 today, this evening. We had two more deaths today, bringing the total in Stanislaus County up to seven. There was eight more positive cases, although I don't know where they're at because that's kind of kept confidential. But apparently the jump in cases is primarily because of the, this Turlock Nursing and Rehabilitation Center and probably about 40 cases or so just in that facility. Though I can't verify that for sure because of the confidentiality. That's probably gonna be pretty close. All essential services are continuing as normal. We have seen a high increase in the senior meal program as seniors are not able or not willing to go out and shop for food because of their maybe weakened physical condition. So the county is serving frozen meals to them and that, that has increased quite a bit, but, but we're able to handle that. The total cases for the coronavirus in Stanislaus County now has been 312 cases. And as I say, only seven deaths. All of the seven were elderly or senior citizens and every one of them had some underlying health condition that, that certainly contributed to their death. As far as the other thing that came up tonight was the testing that, that we're doing at Salida Library. And there's a questionnaire that you fill out when you go on the website. And because of the limited test supplies that we have, we have adequate numbers, but we're limiting those to people who actually have some symptoms. So they're gonna ask you some questions on, you know, things like fever, cough, that sort of thing. And so if you meet the criteria where you have a good chance of, of having it, then we want to test you. But we don't have enough test supplies for everybody. So that's why it's limited and the questionnaire that you fill out online is analyzed by the staff and you meet the criteria, you do get the test. And that, that's all I have this time.
Thank you. Did I miss anybody? I think I got everybody. Okay, with that, we will be moving to closed session and then afterwards, we will adjourn to our next regular meeting, which will be held on May 11th, 2020. At this time, I'm assuming it will still be via Zoom as we were this evening. So for those of you who want to take part, please be on the lookout for the agenda and all the information. So with that, we will go ahead and, and close, move to closed session, excuse me. So thank you. Diane? She's really not on the phone or on anymore.
Yes, I'm on, Mayor.
Diane, I don't, I didn't get a link and I don't know if you want to email me. My problem is I'm using the city computer and I don't have email on this or I don't get my email on this one, so I can't get the link.
Okay, let me, you don't have access to your city email?
I do on my phone, but if I push it on the phone, it links me iPhone and it doesn't link the computer.
Okay. Let me send it to you. I need to send it to you offline.
Okay. And you'll send it to my city email?
I'll send both your city and your work, your other email.
Okay, that's fine. Then I'll, then I'll just forward it to one of my emails I can access from.
Yep.
Thank you.
We can stop sharing now?
Hi, Diane. How are you doing?
Good. We still have four attendees.
I would say this process is working out very well.
Okay. Tom, can you report out, please?
Yes, will do, Mr. City Manager. We did not take up item one on items two, three, and four. The council gave direction to staff and the outside legal counsel.